Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone from the workshop session. And we have these call roll.
Adams.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Duck.
Here.
Hopkins.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wonka.
Here.
Tomowski.
Here.
Aaron Williams.
Here.
Tony Williams. Mayor Ed.
Here.
City Fair.
Here.
Very good. Just want to remind people, Alderman and everybody in the room, that just try to go out to the Fourth of July celebration on the Fourth. That committee puts in a lot of work for a nice event. So just try to wander out there and check things out. A lot of kids' activities and it's a fun day. Hopefully it'll be out in the eighties or, you know, yeah, not nineties like it usually is. But that said, committee reports, yes, Dan.
I'll jump in there if you notice on the agenda. The newer packet, there's a transportation network company services. This is Uber and Lyft types of operations. We have some information that there is or may well soon be a Lyft operator in Jacksonville. And just to kind of touch base with that, we better get this before you. This is Springfield ordinance. Take a look at it. We can put something into effect fairly quick. One thing that I did see here, they had a fairly steep fee. Yeah, $500 fee. And I think this is corresponding to some municipalities that have very expensive licenses for taxi cabs. For example, up in Chicago, it's fifteen, twenty thousand dollars or more, it seems like, for a badge for one cab. Do you recall, I don't think we need to be anywhere near that high. I think we, to the extent we want to encourage them to be here, just a nominal fee would be all. We'd need something to cover where the processing is. Take a look at this, let me know what you've thought. We don't have to do anything at all, which means they run unregulated in Jacksonville. Or we can adopt something that's not very onerous to them, but still gives us some control and knowledge as to what's going on.
How much does, how does our current ordinance of working taxi cab?
I didn't check to see. It's not a huge fee for taxi license. Twenty-five dollars or so.
And is it for the company or is it for the vehicle?
For the vehicle.
So probably something in power with that.
That's what I would suggest.
And maybe what you said that if it's, if it's only like one or two vehicles and if they're not here like all the time working. Because I think I, I know somebody who worked in Springfield, he would take Springfield people from Jacksonville. I don't know if he'd take people from Jacksonville to Springfield, the way that Lyft and Uber would. But I mean Uber, Uber and Lyft might have more Springfield apartments than we have in here.
Yes, that's true.
So, so I, like you said, it's like maybe it'd be better just to have not any regulations unless there's a lot of, a lot of traffic.
Yeah, that's, that's a possibility. Take a look at it, email me any comments you may have. I can very easily place your address, this thing, put it into Jacksonville format so that...
The twenty-five dollars might not be worth a headache.
Right. And it doesn't necessarily have to be twenty-five dollars.
But the other hand is, I think you, you also want to know what's going on in your city and, and have some knowledge that it's happening.
At the very least, yeah, we'd like to know a list of who the drivers are. And I think there may be imports coming to the city from the community. If there is an operator in town, what the city knows about them, they have to provide insurance and all sorts of safeguards. I know for Uber, I'm not familiar with Lyft. I would think it'd be the same type of operation, but at least we can have some say in what's going on.
I guess the other question I had is, so we're twenty-five dollars now for every taxi company or for every taxi that we license?
I think it's twenty-five dollars every taxi company. And if it's possible, I don't know that a city necessarily licenses Uber.
Okay.
And I'll...
Because I guess for twenty-five dollars, like what are we doing? What the services are providing is that we're twenty-five dollars for us to do anything?
Just basically having a different process.
Because maybe just there were... But like what have we done with that information the past couple of years? Like the information on taxi companies, has there been any complaints? Do we follow up on stuff?
There are things with complaints we get. And we follow up. Who heads up?
That's it for me. I guess it'd be nice just to, maybe just put company in those like two minutes, like half of it.
Yeah, that's fine. Or if you give them something like that, it's going to be more than one.
Why bother? You're going to spend that much just to talk about it?
Yeah, put in your packets about a month ago, the IML in September. I've gotten a few responses back. Just get back to me whether or not you're interested in attending or not. So go ahead and get those reservations made and get the IML packet paid for. So just let me know as soon as possible.
Committee reports tonight, pending a public work, calling in Scott.
First item, discuss waived bids and exception proposals for demolition of property located 904 North Main Street, 866 Guilin Avenue, and 603 Northwest Street.
Kelly.
Jim, here.
You got the numbers.
Yeah. These are three properties. We've gone through the expedited demolition process, which involves posting a notice on the property. It has to be expanded. Posting notes on the property, publishing in the newspaper, you're quoting the notice and sending notice to the last owner address of the owners and any lien holders. The numbers that we've got back, one is 904 North Main. I haven't had a chance to take a look at the piece, but seventeen thousand five hundred from, is rolling for the lowest. Also, they had the lowest bid for 866 Guilin Avenue, fourteen thousand one hundred, sixteen thousand six hundred for the demolition of 603 Northwest. When we complete the demolitions and file liens against the property, we rarely recover anything on those liens because the property is typically set vacant for a number of years after that. We have made some others to try and drum up some interest in sales, which is not, we've not had a lot of success at that. But the main thing is we just want to get old abandoned houses down, the ISO and the state of the state.
And that's our own budgeted amounts.
That's what I'll do.
Correct. It's not, this is not new expenditure.
Aaron.
Next item, discuss 201 East Morgan Street project.
Jim.
Jim, you want to talk about that?
I met with Kelly. The property on Morgan Street is down, as most of you have seen. After reviewing the project, we did a quick little structural inspection of the adjoining building. The amount of work it would take to, to cover that up and make it presentable really is, is beyond what we think would be advisable. To that end, what we've proposed, Kelly, and I think what we want to move forward on, is the construction of a block, split-faced block facade, much like is on the south side of Augustine's building, which is now all Cajuns. We would do a split-faced block up that east side of that existing building, cover that up. New ridge crown between the two buildings and really clean it up nice. Then we would fill in. The reason that it's not backfilled all the way against the adjoining wall is we'll be putting footing in down there at the bottom. We didn't want to have to turn around and dig it out, so.
Right. And besides the aesthetics, the wall is not capable of maintaining itself in its current condition, so we have to do something with it. And this is the best, of course.
It's been covered up for a hundred years, so it's not, it hasn't been exposed to the elements, so, much like it's just going to be a big sponge, so, right now.
Is this out of TIF funds?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see an overall cost of what this was on that.
He's going to put together, if you, if you give him his contract, he'll put together this bid package.
And we'll get you.
And then we go, we go to that step next, Jim. Tonight is just Jim's contract to put the specifications together to go out for a bid.
Next item is discuss the TIF application.
Yes, we have a new application for a TIF project downtown. Mr. Eric Hack has applied for grant funds. He has purchased 207 and 209 South Sandy, which with some of you as old as me might remember, that was the Pillar Tavern at one time, right, right through that area. And it's been vacant for quite some time, so it's good to see Mr. Hack come in there and, and he's putting quite a bit of money into these. He, his total construction cost is two hundred and ten thousand. He is asking for forty thousand in assistance in the form of a TIF grant. And the review committee approved those funds for that project. The downstairs, both residences, both addresses downstairs will be combined into a large restaurant facility. And the upstairs will be apartments. That's what he has in mind for the structure. Any questions about that?
Do you know where our TIF amount is right now, Kelly?
Yeah, it's, I haven't skipped, it's over six right now. It's over six hundred. Will be, you know, the demo, Jeff, we hear a pretty good chunk of that.
Yeah.
We're, we're doing fine, knowing that that demolition is going to be a...
Yeah, costly.
A big chunk, right. We've kind of pre-planned for that a little bit, so.
You have to admit, it looks a whole lot nicer too with those buildings gone.
I'm sorry?
It looks nicer with those buildings gone.
Well, to me, it looks a lot nicer because every day I thought that thing was going to end up in the street, so I'm, I'm very happy with it.
Was there an accident or?
Yeah, they touched that east wall with the, with the, with the track over and the whole thing just collapsed. So the chimney, the taller part on that structure, just barely hit Brantstad's building and, but everybody's fine. The insurance is, they've got it all taken care of and, and it'll be, it'll be fixed and every, all of that's taken care of. Yeah, it was, it was scary to see how quick that whole east end collapsed. So this was something that we definitely needed to do. Any other questions about the, the new TIF project?
Do you know what is, what is the timeline is on that?
No, I don't. He's, he's doing some demo and he's, he does a lot of this stuff himself. Eric does what he can and so he works a lot of weekends and, and everything. But this would be great to have something else.
Absolutely, he's doing some things.
Have some, yeah, in, in that abandoned structure, that would be great.
All right. Special studies on you, Tomowski.
Mayor, may I, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
The discussion of 201 East Morgan was Mr. Burke. But also along with that, we wanted to go ahead and get your approval for the final payout on that demolition. While we're right there, if, the final payout on that project was, the original amount was two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And the total came up to be two forty-four. And we knew, even in the resolution, we commented that there's going to be a little bit of additional because what we did, we had to go in there and mortar over all those exposed bean pockets, all the way down for all three floors. Because if that, as much rain as we had, I'm really glad we did. But the moisture soaks in those bean pockets, you know, and then starts going down. It could do damage to Mr. Scott's building and everything. So the additional, the additional, what, six grand was to cover all those, mortar in those bean pockets just to hold that exterior wall until we could get, we can get it fixed permanently. So we knew there was going to be a little bit additional, but the total was two forty-four, nine thirty-seven dot oh seven. So it wasn't a whole lot extra, but they, I think, could, demolition did an excellent job there. We'd like permission to pay that out. Thank you.
Thanks. Special studies on you, Tomowski.
Pass on the, Alford Brandon Adams, he has some guests to talk about the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Committee Chair. Well, everybody knows this topic's vastly approaching with the recreational build being signed by Pritzker as soon as tomorrow. What we're talking about tonight is adding taxes to Jacksonville with legitimate regulated businesses. This cannabis multifaceted market is rich with opportunities now, but maybe not later if we just wait to see what we get January first. The recreational legislation includes dispensaries, craft growers, producers, transporters, cultivation. The list is endless with possibilities, plus last year's industrial hemp, like hemp crops, hemp textiles, hemp building materials, CBD production, and other businesses from hemp manufactured products, as well as medicinal from five years ago that still isn't here. Half of that including the farmers first, because we're an agricultural community first. JR EDC's employment location quotient say farm is number one for this area. Jacksonville should consider a destination for hemp crops right here. We'll soon be talking about lounges and consumption sites called social clubs, like a cigar bar. Our in recreational states legislation presently, we'd be looking at all events with alcohol, which is also legal. Annual celebrations, even races in the golf course where alcohol is at Jacksonville's fairgrounds and parks. These will potentially need consideration, approval, and license for cannabis consumption. Taxes will be one percent tax on medical cannabis, period. And with a recreational of four percent state tax and possible three percent more added and quarter percent increments locally. Jacksonville needs to think about attracting businesses, not opting to pass these opportunities by. We have some well-respected guests involved with the cannabis community to present information and talk about their past and future endeavors economically and otherwise. I'd like to quote a sentence from a three-year-old study that Collinsville City Manager sent me this week. It's a zoning practice. I'll just hand these out. I have the email link if anybody else is interested in one. I figured maybe two people might want one. But the very last summary in here, it's basically what other states have gone through. There was only four recreational at the time, now there's eleven, including us. And what they have done legally as far as accommodating for different instances from different requests from different businesses in the cannabis community. And so on the very last page here, the conclusion was done. The public is overwhelmingly in support of legalization of recreational marijuana. A recent Associated Press University of Chicago poll indicated that sixty-three percent of those polled supported legalization. Although when broken down into medical and recreational, a smaller number, yet still a majority, supported recreational. That said, however, eighty-nine percent of millennials, now the country's largest generation and voting bloc, support complete legalization, as with medical marijuana legalization. As more states legalize, even more states will likely follow suit. And then I would like to introduce Chris Wildrich, owner of Herbal Remedies Dispensary of Quincy, one of Illinois's first four dispensaries from the inception of the cannabis program. Also Dan Lynn, Executive Director of Illinois Normal, that's the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws, and Merivis Dispensary in Grand V Village on North Grand and Springfield. There's also Merivis Chicago, as well as Bedford Grove, a cultivation branch of this conglomerate. I thank you both for attending and informing the council. I will say ladies first, but whomever would like to start?
Oh, stay up and talk. As Brandon said, my name is Chris Wildrich. I'm co-founder and co-owner of Herbal Remedies Dispensary in Quincy. We opened our doors on November ninth of two thousand and fifteen and we started serving patients on that day. When we first started this journey, let me tell you a little bit about my background, how I got into this industry. It wasn't an industry that I was in hot pursuit of. My partner, who's always started, lives out in Colorado, called us up one day and said, hey, Illinois just passed legalization of medical cannabis. You need to look into this for Alex, who had Alex's, my partner's youngest daughter. She has cerebral palsy. And she's gone through a number of grandma seizures. So right away, we started looking at cannabis as a possible alternative to help treat her seizures. And through just a short period of time of starting to do some self-education on how people are actually using cannabis for therapeutic purposes, was very eye-opening to me because growing up cannabis wasn't part of my life. I was always told, as we were, we've all been told in this room, we've all grown up being told that cannabis is bad for you. It's ill, it's an illicit drug, it can make you do bad things, stay away from it. Your teacher's telling you to do this, so you do what your teacher says. So cannabis was never part of my world, but through research and just finding out how cannabis is helping people medicinally, it, I started opening my mind to the possibility. We also started talking to friends and family members and surprisingly, we found out a number of our friends and family members are already using cannabis to help with different symptoms that we're dealing with. So, but there's that stigma that we're, that comes with cannabis. Early on, we started talking to our city officials and law enforcement about what our plans were. We hadn't, by that time, we had made the decision, we wanted to pursue an application to obtain a license to own and operate a medical cannabis dispensary. So we took the approach of trying to be a good neighbor within the city of Quincy. We opened our doors to law enforcement. We were very open with them as far as our security plan, our system. Welcome them into our dispensary anytime. Also, anytime we have an event, we invite our mayor, keep them informed. And I can tell you two dates, we have had zero incidents of threat. We've had no adverse event take place at the dispensary, around the dispensary as a result of the medical cannabis dispensary. We are now with the, with the target date of tomorrow, Governor Pritzker signing the adult use bill. We are again having those conversations with our local chief of police, our mayor, our city council members. We have intentions of operating as dual dispensary. What our plans are, again, continuing to be a good neighbor. But in preparation of our plans, I reached out to our Illinois State Police Inspector. One thing, as a licensed dispensary in the state of Illinois, we are subject to random unannounced inspections by Illinois State Police, by the Illinois Department of Finance and Professional Regulations. They have access to our security cameras. They, at any time, can tune in and watch how we are operating. But reaching out to the Illinois State Police recently, just to find out just how many incidences have there been with regards to medical cannabis patients, whether it be traffic stops, driving under the influence, something like that. And there have been so minimal, they're not tracking it. So, so far, medical cannabis patients have been responsible. But that, I believe, has come from education. We do a good amount, a great deal of educating, constantly reminding our patients what they need to do to be responsible. We're in the general public, educating about cannabis for the business. But with adult use coming, part of the conversations that we're having with the city is what's in it for them? And I look at Jacksonville and I think about what's in it for you. As Brandon said, there's an opportunity for tax revenue. Adult use cannabis is going to be greatly taxed. And the municipalities have an opportunity to reap some of those taxes. Looking at where dispensaries already are in this area, I can tell you already, groups are looking at Jacksonville. This is a, an attractive community for an adult dispensary. It's an opportunity for, you talk about vacant properties, it's an opportunity for a vacant property now to become new ones. It's an opportunity to create new jobs. It's an opportunity to bring a new industry to your community. There's an opportunity for ancillary revenue. Because when a dispensary comes to your community, there's going to be available. They're going to buy their supplies, their materials locally to the best that they can. So there's revenue generation there. New jobs. These people that have new jobs, they're going to spend their paychecks in your community.
Are you planning on expanding?
We are, we are. But what, people will travel to get legal access to cannabis. With your dispensary, you experience, people travel in the distance. People will travel an hour to get to our dispensary. People are going to travel, they're going to come to Jacksonville, they're going to purchase their cannabis. And while they're here, they're going to shop, they're going to buy. They're going to go out for lunch or for dinner. They're going to buy their gas here. So there's that opportunity as well for the community. Touching on safety, what we know is businesses that are located near and around a dispensary actually feel more safe in the community because of the heavy surveillance that dispensaries are required to have. Both inside the dispensary and external, crime has actually gone down. There's studies that show crime has actually gone down in those areas where dispensaries are placed. As I mentioned, on the medical side, there has not been a significant amount of traffic accidents or traffic stops as a result of someone operating their motor vehicle under the influence.
Being so close to the border, how are you going to treat out-of-state recreational cannabis users?
Um, you know, I'm going to treat them just like they are local. Educate, educate, educate on being a responsible consumer. I think that's one of the key components to making adult use a success in the state. As we've seen that proven already on the medical side. And, yeah, just educate, educate on what, you know, what they are allowed to purchase, what they are allowed to possess. Being mindful of not driving and consuming, transporting it safely. Keeping it away from minors. Diverting is, is a concern, but again, when we share the consequences of what, you know, they have to, to lose, you know, just as we've done on the medical side, just educate, educate.
So you're going to treat the recreational the same as the medical? And you treat the out-of-state patients the same as you would your medical patients with the consequences?
One of the things I feel very strongly in is today we have a medical program. Illinois's program is so restrictive. You have to have a specific qualifying condition. You can't just have arthritis. You can't have osteoarthritis. You have to have rheumatoid arthritis. But arthritis in general, it causes... But arthritis in general, it causes pain, inflammation. Those people who don't have a specific qualifying condition cannot get into Illinois's medical cannabis program. I can tell you, many of the people that don't qualify are using cannabis illegally. I foresee when adult use goes active January one, many of those people who are using cannabis today to treat their symptoms will be in dispensaries, adult-use dispensaries, purchasing cannabis to help with depression, anxiety, pain, and a plethora of other symptoms that disqualify them from participating in the medical program.
So a good portion of the recreational patients will be looking to apply it medically, they just don't qualify for the conditions from the state?
I foresee that. We talk to many people on a daily basis who are trying to get into the program, but as you talk through whether qualifying condition might be, you know, like just don't candidate. So, yeah. But they, they're using it today to help with their symptoms. Again, talking about safety, or, or let's go back to wellness. I've seen firsthand how cannabis can help people get off opioids. We have a number of patients in our dispensary today who are opioid-free. That wasn't the case when they first started coming to the dispensary. You talk about the opioid crisis and the number of deaths. We know for a fact that cannabis, no one has ever died from use of cannabis, and that's because of the human endocannabinoid system. Again, talking a little bit about wellness, and the more you know, you've, you come to find out that cannabis is actually a very safe medicine. It's natural and it actually works with our body. Our bodies are designed to work with cannabis. Again, going back to the human endocannabinoid system. Our bodies naturally produce cannabinoids, that same type of chemical compound that's found in cannabis plants. And when an individual takes in cannabis, those cannabinoids go to that part of the body that needs them to relieve pain, relieve the inflammation, whatever your body needs, it knows exactly where to go. It's not, a lot of us are taking today to treat the same type of symptoms. But really, it, what I have found, one of the very important keys is education, education, education. Because we've all been misinformed from the very beginning. I brought with me, prior to prohibition, this is an actual physician's prescription for cannabis tincture. Back in the day before prohibition, every physician had cannabis tincture in their medicine bag. And cannabis was a household medicine, just like aspirin is in your home today. Cannabis was just part of it. Prohibition had nothing to do with showing that cannabis was a bad medicine. There was no scientific facts or evidence to support that. Prohibition had everything to do with people in powerful positions who had financial gain to lose. So, in a roundabout way, they were able to make it illegal. You know, I have found through my journey with cannabis and our federal government, there are a lot of hypocrisies. And our federal government continues to keep cannabis at a schedule one drug because there's no medicinal value. But yet, it has a patent on the cannabis plant. This is the actual patent. It was issued to, um, it was issued in two thousand and three to the National Institute of Health for its antioxidant and neuroprotective properties. Our federal government knows that cannabis has medicinal properties.
There's two drugs that are made, Epidolix and Marinol and Epidolix. I know is the CBD that helps relieve the seizures for kids with no psychotrophic effects.
I found this, this is, this is a drug bust. Twenty-four million dollar drug bust. Took place in two thousand and sixteen in Florida. And my question is, where does that twenty-four million dollars go? It was DEA drug bust.
That's a street value.
Can you bring?
This is, this is-
That's a street value of twenty-four million. There's no actual money there.
This is money.
Well, that's money?
This is money.
There's a stack of money behind the drugs? Is that what we're talking about?
This is all cash. It's all about money when it comes to our federal government. Bringing it all back, is there anything I can answer?
Why don't we, can we hear from the next speaker and then maybe ask someone questions?
I'll try to keep it brief for everybody's time. I mean, the real opportunity for Jacksonville would be to have something with the craft grow in town here. The craft growers could have licenses to also do dispensing. And then if Jacksonville really wants to, you could have these social consumption lounges available as well, just like you see with craft breweries where you have a sampling room attached to them. Uh, my big warning to the city of Jacksonville would be that if you go for the highest tier of taxation at the reasonable rate, uh, there's going to be a limited amount of these licenses available. The, the, the business people will just go to the next town. They'll go to South Jacksonville, they'll go to New Berlin, where they're going to be welcoming with open arms with a lower taxation rate. Um, when it comes to the actual licenses, right now, there's fifty-five medical cannabis dispensaries. Each one of them will be able to become a dual use as well as open a secondary site for January first. So you're looking at a hundred and ten potential retail locations for the entire state on January first. After that, there'll be a second wave of licenses available, which would be seventy-five for dispensaries. For the cultivation, there would be thirty total large-scale cultivation licenses, of which right now, there's twenty-one medical cannabis cultivation centers. I would expect each one of those cultivation centers, a dual-use license. So you could see potentially nine of these large-scale cultivation centers opening up statewide. Uh, how much you really want to try and recruit one of them to come to town is up to you. The craft growers are going to be a little bit more reasonable to get around here, uh, in terms of the initial capital investment, the ability for somebody to win one of those licenses. Uh, but then back to the social consumption lounges, the state didn't issue a specific license for those. They left it up to the local authorities, the local municipalities. So any type of regulations you might already have for cigar shops, Uber lounges, you could copy and paste that for a retail cannabis, uh, consumption lounge as well. Uh, when it comes to our specific dispensary in Grandview, the only time I've had the chief of police in there is when he has had a car accident out front and he wants to get the video footage from it, or the drive-through liquor store has had issues next door to us. They'll come to us and ask us what happened on the cameras. I can tell them what happens if they really need to see the video footage. I can only give that to them under subpoena, but I have a good working relationship with the chief of police of Grandview. Um, and that's where the outside of our building has a number of cameras that have helped increase the safety and, uh, and help law enforcement in a few situations there. Uh, but realistically, patients are going to be able to grow cannabis starting January first. So medical cannabis patients in Illinois will be able to, able to grow up to five plants. Adults right now would not be able to grow, but I would expect that law to change in the next two to three years. Uh, so if Jacksonville is really looking to capture some of these businesses or to help bring in some needed tax revenue and create jobs from it, my strong suggestion would be to try and get a craft grow as well as a dispensary or a retail store somewhere. Uh, and then if you want to do a lot of those social consumption lounges and make it more of a destination spot, just like you see with some of the craft breweries in Springfield or the Hand of Paper in Petersburg, um, most of those places are not problematic businesses. And if they are, you can always come back and pull their licenses. Uh, and everybody would have to come to the city for zoning approval. So ultimately, you have that authority. Nobody's going to be able to get a license normally without the zoning approval, uh, from the, the city council here. So. Um, you guys have that control. Uh, this is a big business that's going to be coming in here. I expect extreme supply shortages in the very near term. Over time, I would imagine that as more craft growers get off the ground and these cultivation centers expand dramatically, the supply side will pick up. Um, but in that very near term, you could see a, a huge demand that's not going to be met by the supply and some shifting in the pricing and fluctuation, as well as over time, I would expect as more states legalize cannabis, the price of this will drop as well as then the tax revenue. So, uh, keep that in mind when you're looking at what type of taxation you want to put in it. But, um, try to keep it brief. If anybody has any questions about the specifics of the dispensary, I can answer some of them. I can't go into too much of the books. If people have questions on the law itself, I'm happy to answer that. I'm a lawyer, though. Um, I'm happy to be back there in the city hall. It's been a number of years since I was here talking about, uh, I think it was DUID and the police body cameras about three or four years ago. So, thank you very much. If anybody has any questions, we're here to help.
Are there any restrictions on the cannabis lounges as far as, um, do they have to be independent? Is that, can it be hooked on to a restaurant outside of, of, like-
Uh, if it was established and serves alcohol, they will not be able to have, uh, access.
That's the same as Colorado has, I mean?
Can you get into the, I'm sorry.
No, but, but.
Without getting into financial, can you get into the tax aspects of it? What rate of tax is imposed now, for, for example?
And in addition to the medical cannabis, it's a one percent tax on all medical cannabis that's sold. With the recreational cannabis, there's going to be the six and a quarter percent statewide sales tax. And then they really screw this up. They have different taxation rates depending on the potency of the product. As well as a seven percent tax from the cultivation center or the craft growers to the retailers. So you're looking at six and a quarter plus seven gets you to thirteen and a quarter. If you guys wanted to issue another three percent on top of that. And then depending on the most potent products, you can see, uh, limit is twenty-five percent. Uh, Illinois Times has a story that they came out with the highest tax rate for the strongest products would be about forty-one point two five percent.
Has the state imposed a limit on what the local municipality can charge as an additional sales tax?
Three percent.
Three percent is the limit.
And that's a quarter percent increment, yeah.
I guess one thing, one thing that one, Dan, they were saying in, maybe as a question now, since we might be in competition with South Jacksonville, uh, over who applies. Maybe we should have a conversation with them to say that we're going to have a similar tax rate. And, um, I don't think they're, this isn't a regular sales tax, so this wouldn't include the, the one percent for schools, I don't think. Cause there's no locals. But then with the six and a quarter sales tax, that also includes a local sales tax, you know?
I don't believe so.
Cause it'd be nice if that, out of the three percent, we do the one percent for schools. It's like the, everyone in the county ready voted for. If we give these having the grain in South Jacksonville, that no matter where the dispensary is located, with either the city or the county to collect one percent, I think would be a good thing going forward.
Well, I think the city of South Jacksonville can have everything that they, that they've talked about there, as well as we can have that here.
Right, but what he said is that there's only a limited number of licenses at the beginning. So it'd be dumb if we're like fighting over each other and we lose, the whole community loses something.
And after the three waves of licensing, there would only be five hundred retail stores for the entire city. And you imagine most of the businesses are going to go with a denser population.
Yeah, so we're the tail end of this.
And for the out-of-state residents, uh, you can purchase half of the allowable amounts that the even state residents can purchase.
Um, what are the usual hours of operations? Is it daytime business or nighttime business?
The medical cannabis dispensaries are allowed to operate eight to eight. The recreational ones, I believe it's a six o'clock to eight o'clock or six o'clock to ten o'clock.
Is there, you know, in the state, state regulations, is there a setback from a school?
Yes, in the medical there is. I don't believe those exist for dispensaries in the recreational program.
So, no.
Um, there was in this, there was some, they were talking about how Illinois had, or, well, there were some other things about how they established certain setbacks a thousand feet. I believe there was, um, city governments.
Well, that's, that's in the zoning, but it's not the state regulation.
It's the zoning. It would fall under the city and that's why it was going to, you move into the city, what did the city do for you? Just zoning? You find your own facility?
Uh, I mean, the city of Grandview, for those who haven't been there, is about four blocks long by about two or three blocks, uh, uh, north and south. It is a very small city. Um, it's a village. When I went to their village board meeting last week, uh, they were very happy to have us. Um, you know, like I said, we have a drive-through liquor store right next to us. They have problems. Uh, there's a billiards hall pool bar, uh, next to them. They have problems there. But the police, uh, they will sit right in our parking lot because our city operates as more of a, less of a speed trap. Uh, so we have a lot of our clientele who get extremely paranoid, uh, coming into or out of our shop because the police are regularly sitting there issuing speeding tickets. Actually, people have been there a few times. It's, uh, standard protocol. But the local police chief and I have a good relationship. Um, but they didn't really do anything other than give us our zoning approval.
Okay.
And I, cause, cause with the state regulation, we don't want to have the setback too far. Cause I, I guess the, the one seventeen has the special, like, the alternative school downtown, is that what that, what do they call it? We don't want to have the setback very wide because that would take out downtown from hosting a dispensary.
And I spoke with Grandview's president a couple of weeks ago, his name's Pete, and he said he is totally for medical cannabis, totally against recreational cannabis, but totally for a new business in recreational cannabis, Frankie, because they're ready.
And then, you know, the way that that village board meeting went is, they said, well, if we don't end up approving you guys, we know that you'll just go to either Springfield or one of the other villages in that area. Uh, not that I'm looking to, you know, threaten him with that, but, uh, I mean, that's the way that my boss has kind of told me and worked out as well.
So have you looked around Jacksonville? Have you seen any good places to, to expand?
I mean, the big thing is the interstate is very helpful. Uh, you know, you have that thoroughfare of traffic. You have a college out here. Uh, they have a beautiful downtown square that you have been doing a lot of good work with over the past few years since I've lived in central Illinois. Um, you know, farmer's market, art fairs. Um, the stigma of cannabis is slowly eroding. And over time, people will look at this as very similar to people looking at craft beer.
Kind of on that same line, the dual dispensaries, you get a second license. Is there any geographic limitation? You have to be within so many?
There is.
Okay, so you can't be scattered all over the state with two locations?
For the secondary sites, immediately effective, yes. The first wave of new applicants, you make your turn.
And the licenses are pretty expensive, aren't they, to get?
There's a five thousand dollar non-refundable application fee for the dispensaries. Um, with the new recreational ones, it would be a two-year license for, uh, sixty thousand dollars for the taper. Now, if you're looking at the cultivation centers, it's going to be a larger fee to start those, as well as the craft breweries, or the craft growers, sorry, it'd be larger as well. There's also transportation licenses. Um, I'm not sure how much you guys would really have to deal with those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has anyone specifically approached the city to talk about this stuff? They know one of the previous meetings, there was someone, had a friend from Russia, or, from Russia on industry. And they have a grow facility up there and he sat in on the video and kind of collecting information from a friend. So I know he's a. I still good?
I talked to Tom Jordan at the IML workshop in Springfield and he invited me to the city council's meeting that night. So after I got back, he got back, he, he came on there and he introduced me to the council there and everybody. So, um, I'm familiar with everybody.
South Jacksonville.
South Jacksonville.
Any more questions from anybody? Well, thanks, Alvin Adams. This is a good opportunity to bring it out to town, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I have another gig.
Thank you.
If anyone needs to get in touch with me, um, I'm readily available. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Uh, that was nice.
Thank you.
Uh, any public comment?
We will adjourn and go anywhere.